Okay, welcome everybody. This is the first meeting of this committee. We did a practice session last week. Most of the members turned up. So all I ask you to do is if you're trying to get in to make a comment and I'm not responding, just start waving at the screen and I'll try and get to it as quickly as possible. The technology is not that good. It's not bad, but it's not that good. So just bear with us if there's any issues, any problems. I have three Democratic servants here. It's that kind of thing that nobody told me to expect. But we've got three of our Democratic servants who assure me that whatever goes wrong with the IT or whatever, they're on the ball and they will source it immediately. Needs to be this formally now, so just bear with me. Can I welcome Members, Officers and Members of the public viewing proceedings online for today's meeting? I will now ask the Committee Clerk Anne Coy to check Members and Officers individually in saying to ensure that you can be seen and heard. Anne, could you cut out that please?
I'll start with yourself, check can you see and hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Councilor Baransey, can you see and hear us?
Yes, thank you. All right.
Councilor Ghost, can you see and hear us? Yeah. Stirling Mans, can you see and hear us? Councilor Maris, can you see and hear us? Councilor Maris.
Billy.
He's on mute.
He's on mute, Councilor.
You're on mute, Billy.
I keep getting things off then, we're going to cut you off.
Okay.
Can you see and hear us? Thank you. Councilor Tulane, can you see and hear us?
He's on mute.
You're on mute?
He's on mute.
Marie, take yourself off mute. Thank you.
Councilor Brown, can you see and hear us?
Yep, we're all good here, yep.
And Councilor Adfitz, can you see and hear us? And Councilor Shortall, can you see and hear us?
Yes, I can, thanks.
Okay, Councilor Thomas, can you see and hear us?
Yeah, all good, thanks.
Thank you.
Done. Okay, can I ask Ricky and Jane, who are supporting the facilitation of this meeting, to confirm the live stream on the council website is operating correctly? Can I request that Members and Officers leave your microphones on mute during the meeting until you want to comment? And as a hand, I think, first a hand. If you wish to speak, hit the little hand up come up, yarrow. If it doesn't come up, just do that and hopefully I'll be able to catch it up. Can I also ask Officers to turn off your cameras unless you are addressing the committee? When Members and Officers do wish to speak, you can either use the hands up feature by attracting my attention on the screen. When I do bring you in, please unmute your mic and say your name and allow a brief pause while we ensure you are visible on screen. And has there been any notifications of apologies for absence?
Yes, the Councilors Walton, Calhoun Wood, Parsons and Karen Connor and Councilor Don.
Okay, any others now? Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest? Okay, you've all seen or you've all received a copy of the minutes from last meeting on the held on the 20th February 2020. Can we approve these as a correct record? Is that agreed? If you please put your hands up. Okay. Are there any matters arising? No, can I move on then? You've all got a copy of... Okay, sorry. Can I move on then to Cabinet Members' reports? You've all got a copy of the Cabinet Members' reports. We have Cabinet Members' report from Council Liz Parsons. Does anybody wish to raise any concerns, observation, comments on that report? Thank you. We have a report from Sharon Connor. Again, does anybody... Steve? Unmute yourself.
I'm probably going to make myself unpopular, but there's nothing worrying in that. I want to declare a dissent. I can't speak for the other communities, I don't wish to blur the record, but for my own community, I would certainly say I don't accept that cycle lane scheme that was imposed on us with an email the night before has been consultative. It hasn't created, in my view, a logical route that either connects people for leisure or connects people to work. As I say, in a detrimental way, it doesn't be my view, and I've said it at many council meetings, it would make really good sense to have a cycle route from West Derby Village to the countryside, right through the city centre. What we've got is a cycle route that is going to, in the next phase, stop at the Loop Line, which is the leisure route, and connect to Farmwell Street, which I have to say, target a destination of choice. So I'm not going to accept it being the objective as a protective leisure route scheme as being due. Also, the impact on my shopping area and the congestion has been disproportionate to any benefit. So I just want to dissent to this. It would be so long for me to accept the rewards on the same value.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else? I'll come back to Steve, anybody else?
Yeah, I've raised some concerns as well on the cycle lane with Cabinet Member Direct. So similar to what Council Radford said, I think the word for the route through Newsham Park particularly, and I'm hoping that it can be looked at. I mean, I don't know if there's anyone there that can answer. Being told these are temporary, how long does temporary mean? I'm not sure if anyone can answer because the Cabinet Member's not there.
Okay, anybody else? No. I don't know what temporary means or how long temporary means, but what I do know is that the Cabinet Member Sharon has invited anybody to give her a shout or should go and do a site visit and go through the issues, go through the concerns. For example, I know she was out with Council Radford on West Derby Road and Andy Barr on Tuesday this week, I think it was, I'm not sure. You're right, in terms of it seems to be rushed how it's gone in, but clearly there's a recognition from both Cabinet Members and Officers. If they have got concerns, they will try to deal with those concerns as fast as they can. I don't know the detail about West Derby Road, Charners and Andy Barr, and so at some point they will come back to you in a not too distant future to explain what we can do and what we are going to do. I'll raise your concern again with the Cabinet Members, Steve.
I have recorded in the minutes because I'd move it formally as an objection, but if there was a second, but I just want it recorded. We still think conceptually it's wrong. It doesn't achieve the objective of a collective route. It doesn't create a travel to work route and it doesn't travel a travel to leisure route. I mean, going to be candid, if anybody from West Derby or Chubruk wants to go to Kensington, they would cycle through Newsham Park. And it's great for drug dealers going from Rocky Lane to Shill Road at night, but it doesn't achieve the objective. So I think it's... I mean, I do appreciate Andy's taking on some board, some of the suggestions we made. I still think it would make far more benefit, conceptually, we need a cycle route that goes from Sandfield Park through Moscow Drive, Adjustments to the Bollards, through Lister Drive, down to Newsham Park, which would create a real leisure cycle route. It would achieve something. The cycle route we've got is neither fish nor fowl. I'd like that to be minuted. And that's not being offensive to anybody. I know I've had a few robust exchanges with the Cabinet Member for congestion and with Andy Barr, but you know, such is life. We've got a job to represent our residents. And I think it shows the lack of consultation. We've got a scheme that is not working. I'd like that minuted.
Steve, no problem. We are aware of your concerns and as you said, we did have the Cabinet Member down there and the Assistant Director who addressed your concerns and they will come back and feedback yourself, I assume, directly what we can and what we can't do or what they intend to do. So hopefully the concerns that you've been raised will be addressed, but I'm not positioned to say whether it's negative or positive.
On record, we feel incredibly aggrieved. We've got a scheme that is not fit for purpose from the beginning and we're now trying to iron wrinkles out of an ill-conceived scheme. And I want that on record. I don't want any, you know, I don't mince round issues as you well know, and that's on the label. The amendments seeking won't resolve the fact that it is actually neither a route to work or a route for leisure. It doesn't achieve either.
Anybody else?
I think Councilor Kate has just joined me, some sort of just checked the...
Go on, yeah.
Councilor Kate, can you see and hear us? Councilor Kate? Can you see and hear us?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I had issues.
Okay, you're okay now.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome. We're up now to Pam Thompson's report. Any comments, observations, questions? We have a report from LSSL, Street Service Update. We've all got a copy of that report.
Do we not vote on the report, Chairman?
Sorry?
Do we not vote on the report, whether we're accepting it or not?
No.
No? Okay, fine. We're calling it, but then, cheers.
Be consistent, Steve, be consistent.
Oh, and consistent and persistent.
I was saying, be consistent. Any comments, observations on the report? Okay, can I move that the report be noted?
So is that for LS... Sorry Chair, was that for LSSL?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, sorry, the report from LSSL. I just had a couple of questions, if that's okay. So I mean, thank you for the report. I can see the mics here, I think. So I mean, I just wanted to say thank you obviously to Officers who did a lot of work during the lockdown and I appreciate that it's been hard on everyone and I know it's been hard to go out there and get on with things while other people have been isolating. Just going through, you mentioned some of the issues relating to parks in the earlier days of the lockdown. Obviously, we had a number of situations, particularly locally to where I am, Walton Park, Alstons Park, where in the early days, people were using those places in good weather and overfilling the bins. And I know that I've had conversations with Mike and others about that, about what we do about that. Just thinking about the future and if for some reason we went into another locally imposed lockdown or a national one and we get the same kind of scenes in those parks again, what kind of steps will we take to address some of that? Would that be perhaps more temporary bins in that situation? Or as I have had conversations with you about, do we need a more robust communication strategy and have some hard-hitting signs about why we're littering in parks across the city? I'm happy to provide such artwork to LSSL or anyone in the communication team. I'll leave that to Officers or whoever wants to answer.
I'm a different colour. Chris.
You can have it, whatever colour you like. I've seen some far more hard-hitting ones as well.
Mike, I didn't realise you're in. Do you want to make any comments on your report?
Yeah, that is fine. Just to answer the question regarding the litter, it was a whole new world, Rin, and learning how much those parks would be used becomes a bit of a shock. There was such a massive increase with the public using parks and we want to capture that and maintain it going forward. But you are right, the bins were just hammered, they were constantly filled, they were just... Yeah, so we had to change our resources. The lessons learned, we built at the back of it, say that we'll put additional bins out to start with, that we'll put additional resources out at those peak times, now we know what they are. But going forward, the campaign and the posters that you just shared, as you must have been aware from further in the report, they are about to relaunch Scrap It, which has got a number of fly tipping, dumping and littering. And Sharon will be launching that over the next three to four weeks. That picks up exactly near enough the same posters that you're using, but via that Scrap It campaign, with some hard-hitting messages that aren't normal. And I'm sure when you, if you shared that poster that you have, those are the key messages. Would you dump in your own back garden? Would you do this on your doorstep? They're some of the messages that we want to give and Sharon at the moment is getting ready to launch that. We haven't decided which park to launch that element in, but we will be letting you know shortly.
Any else want to come in?
I have other comments made. I think last year's figure... Can you hear me now?
Cool.
Yeah. So last year, the flights, I think, were made by five wards, were made by Central, Paken, Princess Hocken, Kestrel. So the flight check hasn't done any better than those wards would be next resources to be dealt with. That's it.
What comments?
Yeah, Chair, there's a, overall, there's a 25% increase in fly tipping right across the city following the initial lockdown. We're going to have to try to address that fly tipping because it hasn't gone down, it's still remained the same. And as people are working at home, they're generating more and more waste. What we have noticed is that the waste capacity that each household's generating is actually exceeding some of the bin capacity that we provide and we need to find a way to address that. So between putting extra crews out today with fly tipping and dealing with the extra waste capacity, the whole service has to be restructured and changed. At the moment, we're running three extra refuse vehicles and we're running four extra teams just dealing with fly tipping. We're hoping that the campaign that Council O'Connor will be launching will help us target reduction in some of that fly tipping, instilling some of the behaviours we want to see from those residents. And it's about advising, helping, supporting the communities, but at some point we do need to get a little bit tough and enforce against some of those fly tipping and dumpings that are taking place.
Any else? Marie? Marie, then Steve. We can't hear.
Oh, no, sorry.
Could you unmute yourself, Marie?
Can you hear me now?
Just.
Is that better?
That's better.
Yeah, just thanks for Mike really. We've been, we've got the alleyway programme rolling out in Kensington Fields. And still a lot, we've still got a lot of fly tipping, as other colleagues have said, and I think it's been exacerbated over COVID. What I'd really like some help with, Mike, is how we communicate with the universities because we've got the students, we've got the... And I did mention this at the consultation, that we really need to be communicating with all of the universities. That's something I'd really like raised.
Steve.
I'm just going to say on the fly tipping, we actually haven't noticed an increase in fly tipping in Chubruk. And I think because we've actually advertised, we've had cameras out trying to catch people the culprits, I think that may have modified the impact. If Mike's got any ward analysis, I'd be grateful, not now, but another time. We are pleased with being able to kick back the skip programme and we are noticing there's more usage of the community skips because people are not in work and able to use them. So that, I think that has also been a helpful contribution.
Okay, Mike, I mean, I'm not going to bore you with cacti, you know, the stacy cacti and the fly tipping, but our prime concern is industrial fly tipping, as you're well aware, but I'll have a separate conversation with you each time of the week about what I'd like to see you doing. I think in terms of what, thank you for the report. I think the work that LSSL have done during the COVID virus and the lockdown, I think it's been really, really good in terms of initially, you had a fair bit of absence, but those, the people who are in work really pulled out. I think the unknown area you walked into with the COVID, I think the staff, all the staff have done an incredible job. It's been, I know it's been really, really difficult, but you haven't fell over, you mightn't have got the stuff as fast as what you normally would. But you, 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 the whole group has really worked hard to achieve what they've achieved. So they should be applauded for that. There's also an open report about the two lads who tackled the guy who was setting the shopkeeper. And I think it's in Toxham, is it? I certainly like to place on record to those two lads, make sure to thread back to them, Mike. I'll do an email tomorrow. But you know, congratulate them from this committee and the, from the whole council to do what they did, put themselves in danger to protect one of our residents. So they should be really applauded and I will do an email tomorrow to that effect. And if that committee could agree to that, I'd be happy, yeah. Everybody happy with that, yeah? Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I move then that the report? Sorry.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Gone completely now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Go on.
Just quick, I just want to ask, Mike, about the universities, are we going to try and get through to them? Because when I went to the consultation, we weren't making any contact with them and there was nothing, there was nothing in place. Are we going to be working on that, Mike?
Okay, so as part of the alleyway programme, the answer is yes. So Kay and the team, which is recycling team, have got engagement with the current universities and what we're also doing is trying to identify contacts in each of the ward areas so we can develop local people to be local champions, especially around some of the students as they, they come back to the location. I'll provide you details of who their contacts are and what reasons go in with the universities. I'll provide that back to the group. In addition, I'll also provide the ward analysis around the fly tipping so you have that information as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay then, can I move then that the reports be noted? Agreed? Or shake his head, well done. We have a report on a licensing update. Have we all seen the reports? Have we all read the reports? Does anybody want to raise any items on the report?
Chief Inspector, what officer have we got? What officer have we got for that?
Kevin Johnson.
All right, bring it in, Kev, to answer the questions. Chris?
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, thank you for the report and thank you for the work of licensing, particularly in the issues that we had in Walton Village around June. I'd like particularly say thank you to Andy Blackmore, actually, because he actively came out and met with us and met with some of the licensed premises that we had some issue with. And thank you to the committee, who I know have had the hearings in the last few days and has been a result of that. I'm just kind of thinking about the future really. I mean, obviously you mentioned in the report that there are different stages that the government had opened up the ability to do off-sales and different changes. The government kind of gave a, you know, it gave a lot of freedom to grant off-sales to properties quite quickly, but it never really gave us the powers at all to put any restrictions very quickly on places if situations got out of control. And we all saw, not just in Liverpool, but elsewhere, right away across the country, a kind of a perfect storm that places were allowed to do off-sales and boom, people automatically go to those places that are selling alcohol and, you know, we all saw the scenes there and on the pierhead. I just wondered, and I suppose it's, I suppose it's hard, I suppose maybe for an officer to answer, but do we need as a committee to ask the Mayor, to ask the Chief Executive or somebody to write to the government and kind of say, look, if this is going to happen again, we're going to need some new powers here to deal with issues that might arise like this in the future? Because it's a possibility, it's an entire possibility this might happen again. And thinking about the future as well, I mean, one of the things that we've learnt from this experience is that we all need to work together far better and we're going to look at setting up a pub watch scheme. What can we do to kind of advance that across the city? And do we need to look at something that's not legally enforceable for Liverpool? Now, I understand that we've got the licensing objectives and everyone should be aware of those licensed objectives, but do we need something in Liverpool like a, I don't know, an informal kind of certification or something like that to kind of say, you know, these are the objectives, you know, we're responsible licensed premises and we're all kind of in this together really and this is what we're going to, you know, we're going to kind of do. And I don't know, some kind of process to congratulate those places that have actually done quite well during the COVID places in terms of being responsible in their openings and things like that. Some general questions there, but appreciate if you can answer them.
Yes, Chair.
Next, Steve.
I'd like to talk about page 43 of Tuesday, the card readers. I get taxis and buses all the time, usually not people of the services. I asked the driver, although some of the counts, I asked him, did he have his card in motion available? It gets out of use for some reason. And he said no. He said to me, which is one of the points I've raised before, he said the card readers, which were meant to be sort of mandatory in April, they're being suspended or they have to have them available, which I didn't understand, I thought everyone was having them. So I'd like clarification on that because there's nothing worse than a real user getting to a taxi, hoping to pay by contactless payment or credit card payments and then be told, oh, you'll have to go to a cash machine, like, by the corner or wherever it is more, and they get the cash. It's not acceptable. So I'd like clarification on that. If it has been suspended, why? And if it's not suspended, how is it getting enforced? So they all have these machines, but it's not one of the sciences, these machines are everywhere and I've actually no choice but I can afford.
Sam, then Steve. Unmute yourself, Sam. Hey, Sam.
Hello. Hi.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Go on then.
I've got that on to say, I put my hand up ages ago.
Yeah, I've brought you in now.
I'm okay now.
Okay. Steve?
I was just going to say, I went to Liverpool City Centre on one of the nights early on when the lockdown was first lifted. I have to say, I went to four venues and all the staff and the layouts and the application of the COVID regulations were impeccable. So I have sent a note to licensing to say, well done. And I think it really does reflect to the responsibility of the business owners in Liverpool, that they really didn't, they didn't cut corners, they really did apply the regs. And I think we ought to send that message of thanks out. I'll slightly disagree with Chris respectfully. I don't think it's about the council or the police having new powers, it's about the coordinated application of the powers they've got already. Did you hear that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, top, thanks.
Steve?
Hi, Joe, Chris Lomans, I just wanted to come in. Oh, you've gone, I lost your, uh, audio again, Joe. If, if, if the chair doesn't mind, I'll just come in on councillor Brown's comment initially about feedback to government. Um, we've been involved in a couple of sessions with both the Department of Business Energy and Industrial Strategy and the housing, communities and local government teams where we provided, uh, feedback on our experience um, as regulators in dealing with, uh, COVID-19. Obviously, there's been a lot of interest in the without walls initiative as well from them. So there's learning for, for them, um, as well as learning from us around that. Um, you know, um, we haven't got everything right all of the time, but I think, you know, what we're trying to do, um, as regulators is, is finally balance the need to kickstart hospitality and retail and start to help, uh, you know, job retention and businesses. Uh, but at the same time, obviously make sure that, that public health risks are managed. And, and that's our overarching aim. Um, I'll let Kevin come in on the specific points that councillors short of, for, raised about taxes, if that's okay.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Um, just to echo the point from, from Chris really, um, in relation to off sales, yeah, it, it, yeah, we do have certain powers there. But unfortunately, government has taken the stance that off sales was, was actively encouraged. Even to the point that the, the recent legislation around the planning, this is a planning act. Um, that actually allowed all those premises that didn't actually have on off sales. Once, uh, that if they did have on sales, automatically got off sales, uh, and certain conditions that were lifted. So we, it is a bit of an upward struggle really in relation to off sales. And as much as that we are, um, we're trying to deal with governmental actively encouraging drinking, socialising to take place in, in the open air. In relation to, uh, the taxes, um, I can tell you that it has not been suspended. The card readers did come in force, it was mandatory as of first of April. Um, obviously because of the, the situation with lockdown, a lot of, um, taxi drivers, hackney carriage drivers were either self-isolating, elected not to work, uh, or some were even shielding, they had no income. So we weren't, weren't really in a position to enforce it considering the expense that they had to, to fork out. However, now that, um, lockdown measures have been eased, the retail industry is open, the, uh, the hospitality industry is open. We have now started to actively enforce the requirement for it. We're starting with an educational supporting role in the first instance. Uh, and we issued sixty defect notices over the weekend just for those premises, just for those, um, taxes that did not have any card readers in them. So we, we've now taken a, a approach, we've got an operation plan for tomorrow where we will, we will do stop checks on all vehicles just to check that they have got them. We've got appointments made at the, the food hub, uh, where we will fit them, uh, and put appropriate signage in. And we've officers currently every day now this week and next week, where they'll be visiting on taxi ranks, making sure that they've got, they are complying with the regulation.
I've got the mic on, that's why. Can I, can I move that this report is noted? Everybody agreed, yeah? Thank you. Move on then to community safety report, all of your community safety related issues arising during the pandemic and the adapted services. Can I invite the officer who, I don't know who's speaking on this, is it Chris? Jenny, can I invite you in too? You've gone again, Jenny. Ah, yeah, yeah, all right. Do you want to give you, give you a report on that? I know it's an important report.
Uh, really, it's just a summary of, um, what our service has been doing to respond to the changing circumstances, um, since March. Um, we've been able to put our, um, case management meetings all online, they've all been continuing to operate really well. Um, and we've been focusing on how we can support people who have been even more affected, you know, in terms of community safety um, due to, to COVID-19. Um, I won't go, go through the whole report in detail, I'm sure you've all had a chance to see it. But some of, some of the bits I wanted to highlight, particularly around domestic abuse, because I'm sure many of you are aware that, um, that that is something that has, you know, really increases, is much higher risk for people who are, who may be, um, you know, may have been in lockdown with their perpetrators. Um, so we've been able to lever in as much additional funding as possible for our outreach services. Um, they've, we've seen approximately about twenty percent increase in domestic abuse incidents, crimes, calls for service. Um, but also the cases have been particularly complex, as you can imagine, with, um, additional strain of the financial situation, uh, childcare, et cetera. Um, and also people who were previous victims who, through a sort of post-traumatic stress disorder, have, this has sort of reignited um, some of their issues and have come back for additional support. Um, we've also, some, some positive things that have come out of this are, we've had a weekly, um, our team set up a weekly provider meeting, which has been really useful and I think we will, you know, we've been looking for what we can learn from this to take forward. And that's one of the things that we're going to continue is that better communication, supporting them with things like PPE, et cetera. Um, we've also worked very closely across with, with other neighbouring boroughs to improve communication, to tell people, yes, the regulation, you know, the guide, the regulations were to, to stay at home, but not if you're a victim of domestic abuse. You know, we're still there to support you, you know, we're able to help you. Um, and in some cases, people have actually preferred the online support. So, um, sexual violence victims, many of them actually did prefer the online support have come forward. And so we will be continuing, you know, we'll ask our providers to continue to provide that service for, for those that want it. Anti-social behaviour as well was another one that had a massive increase, obviously a lot related to, um, COVID regulations. Um, so we quickly established a multi-agency group to, to look into that and weekly, um, analysis of figures. And we were able to deploy the, the fire services street intervention team, um, to try and encourage, you know, compliance with the guidance. Um, and now our, um, our team are now starting to do home visits again outside. Um, so that's good. Um, and we've done surveys with young people to make sure the messaging, messaging was appropriate for young people. Um, lots of work around asylum seekers and refugees. Again, meetings and structures have improved, particularly around the area of health, so that has been one, one benefit we found. Um, we've done contact with every single one of our resettled refugee family, families to help them, um, you know, support them through, through the crisis and help with public health information in lots of different languages. Um, you're probably aware during the recent Princess Park outbreak, our team, um, were at their door knocking and also, um, with the support of other, other teams as well, um, talking to people, reassuring them, but also to explain, you know, the risk, if you like. Um, other work, um, on a brighter note, we've had a massive reduction of serious violence by thirty-two percent in knife crime. So actually, the most effective crime reduction, uh, method is to have a, a lockdown. I don't expect anyone will be advising that as a community safety method. Um, so, so that's good news, but we are, you know, working hard to sort of, hopefully to make sure that that doesn't bounce back. And we've launched a funding stream, um, as part of the money we've been allocated through the Merseyside Violence Reduction Partnership. That's live at the moment. Um, and that's to look at things like early help around, um, prevent, it's very much a public health approach to preventing serious violence. Um, another, another big event recently was the launch of the hate crime strategy on the thirtieth of July. And to coincide with the anniversary of the, of the murder of Anthony Walker, um, which I understand went well. Um, and, um, other work, we've been working closely with, with Kevin, who's just spoken and others around, um, activity in the city centre, through our city centre multi-agency group.
Jenny, excellent report. Excellent content within the report as well. Any comments, observations by anybody, William?
Thanks, thanks, Joe. Yeah, on page, uh, page forty-four, uh, on the strategic level, for my estate or COVID meetings. Do we get to see the minutes or the summary of those meetings? Um, on page forty-five, um, the mayor input, the mayor's incomes were from the whole thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. But the MOJ, the Ministry of Justice, they put two hundred and twenty-two thousand and seventeen pounds in. Is, is it necessary to put that thirty-four thousand in when they put so much in their money? Not saying that you shouldn't have them, but I'm saying is it necessary to put thirty-four, okay? When you're only getting a quarter million in as it is, and, or more. Uh, and also, um, you, you say on page forty-six, there's a, um, I mean, the reduction of A S B in parks and spaces. I think that's way in progress because sometimes I get a lot of complaints about kids, uh, in parks or, or young adults, I should say, of course. Young adults in parks and, uh, it puts young mothers off, mothers with children, brands, because they do compete with gangs. And, uh, so I do think that's way in progress. And also on page forty-seven, this arm, it's called the strategic group. Do we get an agenda, minutes of that or somebody put going on with that? And, um, uh, there's a, uh, the city centre analysis performance, again, this tracker of, uh, domestic abuse. Do we get somebody or an analysis of that sent to us? And just, just for reference points, just to get us something we should know about, that's it, thank you, Jenny.
There's Jenny, before we ask anybody else. Sorry, can you hear me, Jenny?
Yeah, do you want me to answer those questions now? Yeah?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you'll be up and I'll answer those, yeah.
I'll try to keep it brief then. Um, in terms of the domestic abuse, um, figures, we can share those with you. We did send around a detailed member briefing, I think, three or four weeks ago that had, um, information on the analysis in there. So we can, we can send that again if, if that hasn't got through or, you know, it's, it's been lost in, in the email. So I, I can take that as an action. Um, in terms of the disarm meeting, that's a multi-agency, um, strategic group that isn't, it isn't a public meeting. Um, it's been, I think it was set up about twelve years ago. Um, and so it does direct all the, um, activity that we do in partnership with the police, fire service, probation, um, et cetera, looking at serious organised crime. It does have a lot of confidential information sort of shared in there, obviously because of the nature of its work. But if, you know, if you want to get in touch and there's anything specific, we can, we can help you with that. Um, in terms of the domestic abuse funding, I can see, I can absolutely see what, um, you know, why you would, why you would say that. What happened is that initially, um, we didn't, you know, we didn't hear about the Ministry of Justice funding until, um, you know, a few, a couple of months or a few weeks into the, the pandemic. Um, and we knew straight away from learning from other parts of the world that domestic abuse was a really high, something was very high risk. So we acted really proactively, um, to, to, and we were lobbied, you know, by our domestic abuse, um, support agencies for that. So we wanted to support them straight away to help them with their initial IT costs because they had to go and buy laptops, et cetera, et cetera. And they don't have large budgets, so, um, it really had, you know, they'd have to dip into their reserves. So that money, that thirty-five thousand was specifically to help cover those costs. And then later on, we were told, um, that central government would give us some additional money as well, which has helped us. So, um, you know, every penny is, is helped really. Um, I'm afraid, I don't have the same page numbers as you, so I wasn't sure about which minutes that you wanted, that you mentioned at the start, sorry.
On page forty-seven.
Disarm.
Oh, right, I covered the disarm. Was, were there some other minutes that you mentioned at the beginning of your questions? Otherwise, hopefully that's everything.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Rhea, sorry, Rhea.
Yeah, I can hear you, hi.
Okay, okay. I've found very much the report and all the work done over that period. I just wondered, is there any way we can get statistics? Um, like a breakdown by ward, especially what I'm interested in is the, obviously the, um, crime, the asylum seekers and the domestic violence. That'll be really helpful just to see kinds of how impact in my ward.
Yeah, Mike, I can definitely look at that. Um, some, some of the figures around asylum seekers, um, we don't own, they're from the Home Office. Either the Home Office's figures and we're not able to share, but there are some things that we can share. Um, but certainly domestic abuse figures, we can, we can do that. So, um, yeah, no problem at all.
Thanks, Jenny.
Alison? Now, do you want to speak, Alison? Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Excellent report, excellent content, just keep up the good, good work and the hard work that I know is happening. Can I move that the, um, report be noted? That agreed? Okay, thank you. Move on then to notion accessible shopping district submitted by councillor Alan Tootmead. Chris, you're going to move this?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I know Alan isn't here to move the motion. Uh, the motion, uh, you can see what it is in your report. Uh, I understand it as an amendment from councillor Barrington. Uh, we're happy to accept that amendment. Uh, I think that the amendment complements the motion, I think adds a bit more detail. Uh, I'm happy to, I don't know how the process works here, whether I have to move the motion and then councillor Barrington moves the motion, uh, amendment, or I can just move the whole thing and we vote on it. Uh, but we're in acceptance of the, of the amendment. Um, I think, uh, the gist of it really is, you know, we, we've all had time and experience to think about how we use space more effectively uh, in, in, in various venues across this city. Uh, and I think this, this kind of complements that agenda and thinking more widely than that. So, um, any other comments or happy to put the vote?
Just, just only not move the motion and one of us will second it for you. And then Dan will put the amendments in, that's okay?
I'll move the motion then, yeah.
Okay, so some. It needs the motion seconded before it can move forward, before the amendment comes in. Now? Daniel? Dan?
Move amendments, yeah.
We've got a second for that. Okay. Anybody who wants to discuss the right to the motion? Pam?
Um, bringing this motion forward and, and the amendment is really helpful as well. Um, as you can see, it covers a lot of issues. Um, and, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot to be done and the more people who help with it, the better really. Um, a lot of things, as Chris said, have, have become apparent, um, during lockdown because people have, um, experienced some of the things disabled people have been experiencing for a long, long time. It's not being able to go out and socialise. For us, the reasons have been physical barriers in the built environment and the transport systems. Um, so yeah, um, I'm, I'm really happy with the motion as amended.
Okay, can I, before we go to the book, can I thank Alan for bringing the motion to, to council? And can I also, Chris, for you moving it? And Pam and Dan for pulling together the amendments. Uh, I think the gangies done a good piece of work on that, so, um, well, well done, congratulations. Can I move then that the, um, we support the, the motion as amended? Is that agreed? Okay, uh, questions? We've had no questions being submitted. Thank you, Chris.
It's all right, they're there for regeneration, I'd say.
Okay, right, uh, just before we close the meeting, the next meeting will take place on Wednesday, the fourth of November. Yeah, um, I can thank you all for your attendance, thank you all for your contribution and look forward to seeing you hopefully in the town hall for the proper meeting. Okay, good night, God bless, see you all soon, take care.
James, can I ask for the last speech? We switched off now, please.
Thank you. Thank you.